Good evening, welcome to the council meeting of May 20. Anyone in the audience with amplifying headphones, please raise your hand and we'll bring those to you. Not seen any, let's rise for the pledge, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Superior republic, the Constitution, and one nation, America. In this solemn, liturgy and festival.
Mary, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes, I will. Councilmember Blush?
Here.
Councilmember Sterns?
Here.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Here.
Mayor Manisco?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman?
Here.
Councilmember Sapp?
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Here.
Thank you, Mary. Does the council have any late changes to the agenda? City manager?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Council have any board reports to share? All right, give them a noise. Has the council had a chance to read the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve?
To approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
All right, there's a motion, the second, to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, the council invites the public to make a public comment on matters of city business. Comments shall be made to the entire council, not individual council members. Please refrain from any personal or disrespectful remarks that create disruption of the meeting. Then the reasonable disruptive conduct continued should be asked to leave the meeting. Mary, anyone outside of the public comment?
Yes, Speaker Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker. Our important speaker. Uh. Laughing, feeling France. All this.
All opposed. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, thank you for your time. Looking to speak on city ordinance 2029-0525. Uh, I will preface this with a question. Where will they go when their camps are dispersed? It certainly won't be to the shelter they've relied on for so long that it's recently close to leaving them without an alternative. And the alternative provided by the proposed ordinance will be 90 days in the Mason County Jail or the Masqually Correction Center. These facilities charge $160 a night and $143 a night respectively. This equates to $14,400 per person in the Mason County Jail and $12,870 per person in the Masqually Correction Center. Given the point in time count from 2024, there are 326 unsheltered individuals on the street. And if every single one of them are rounded up and given the 90 days of jail time, these numbers add up to a whopping $4,694,400 or $4,195,620, depending on what jail they're housed in. These numbers are unsustainable, given the city's $1.2 million shortfall. It should be noted, those daunting numbers are for housing alone. That doesn't take into consideration the cost of public defenders, prosecutors, police resources, and court administrators required to give every last one of them the due process that is their constitutional right. Enforcement of this ordinance will not only make it more difficult for these people to reintegrate by piling medial charges under their criminal records, it'll also push us farther into the hole, even closer to the point of no return. We need to move in the direction of uplifting support of our most vulnerable community members and compassionate community building, instead of down the dark road of criminalizing poverty and suffering. This ordinance is a Band-Aid on a severed artery in an act of class warfare, and we can do better than this. I believe wholeheartedly that the people of Shelton are better than this. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Shayna Garbridge.
Evening, Council, Mayor, Deputy Mayor. My name is Shayna Garbridge, and I am writing as a concerned resident and advocate for the vulnerable members of our community. I am deeply troubled by the recent proposal to dismantle the homeless encampment, currently located within Shelton city limits, and to displace our unhoused neighbors back into the surroundings, in the surrounding woods and brush. This action not only threatens their safety and the dignity, but may also run counter to establish legal standards and Washington state policy objectives. I ask that this plan be recognized by the following legal and ethical reasons. RCW 35.21.684, Support for Temporary Encampment States. Washington law expectably allows religious organizations to host temporary encampments, safe parking areas, and tiny home villages. This demonstrates a legal recommendation that centralizes organized shelter spaces are necessary and appropriate. If our state allows and encourages these solutions, our local government should allow suit, especially when it comes to protecting public health and safety. Also, RCW 43.185C.85 states that homeless housing strategic plan. State law mandates that counties and cities work together long-term solutions to homeless through coordination, compassion planning. Pushing people into inaccessible areas undermines this goal and creates a fragmented, unsafe environment that is incapable with safety objectives. We must ask ourselves, is it just to force our neighbors into hiding, knowing we are serving their highest link to help, help, and hope? Instead of dismissing, let us work together to build their legal supportive paths to provide safe, organized, and assembled environments for our unhoused population. Let Shelton and Mason County be a model of compassion, not just of compliance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Speaker is Nathan Stout.
Thank you for the time to speak to you folks. Um, I understand the compassion these people have, their statements. But the insinuation that I take exception to is that we're responsible for these people making poor choices in their life, continuing to make those poor choices. And I look at that encampment, and I see a lot of people doing drugs all day long. And I see the city, the people with good hearts that want to help these people promoting that lifestyle. And uh, as the father of a addict that I lost my fight with, you are not helping these people by letting them continue that lifestyle. And basically, spending taxpayer money to clean up the mess that they leave. Our EMTs, our police, having to respond to incidents because they have drunken brawls or fights or overdoses. That's not your job. Your job is to maintain Shelton for the people that live here and pay taxes. We have a lot of retirees who weren't raised here. And they deserve your attention and your funding, much more so than these people that have made bad choices. I've talked to a lot of these people over there, I've had to boot them out behind my building, or taken a dump on the back of my property. These people are out of town, they're not locals. Not that that's the defining issue, but we don't owe them anything. And I resent the fact that some people say, look, we owe this to them, and we have to take care of them. We don't, we can give them a helping hand up, and I'm all for that, and I'm all for spending money to do that. But if you are going to continue to give these places, these people a place to camp with no repercussions from their drug use during the day, you're just enabling that lifestyle, and you're going to spiral them into a quicker, they're just going to hit bottom, and usually die when they can. It's all about, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good. Our next speaker is Holly Kebun.
Hi. I'm Holly Kebun, I'm a local business owner. I agree with everything Nathan Stout just said. Um, if we need to provide a place for um, campers in our city limits, it needs to be not in our downtown portal. Um, the local businesses are tired of fighting this, I look at it all day from my picture window from my business. We need to find a spot that is not in our downtown portal. And everything Nathan Stout said, I agree on a mission, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Justin Holzgrove.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Justin Holzgrove, and I'm here on behalf of the Mason County Disc Golf Group to offer sincere thanks to your continued partnership and the operation and maintenance of the Shelton Springs Disc Golf Course. This past weekend, Shelton Springs proudly hosted the Disc Golf Pro Tour's Cascade Challenge. It's a premier event that brought national attention to our community. The event was a tremendous success, drawing over 3,000 people on site across the weekend, including top-ranked professional athletes, their teams, media crews, and bands from all over the country. What made this event truly special and what we hope will make the city of Shelton proud were local impacts, including an economic boost, local hotels were booked, restaurants saw increased traffic, including Midas, uh, which has some great reviews from the pro tour players, and many attendees who explored downtown Shelton and the surrounding areas. Also, national exposure with professional media coverage and live streaming to a global audience, Shelton was showcased as a beautiful and welcoming destination. Community engagement, uh, over 100 volunteers helped with everything from parking, crowd management, to hospitality and course maintenance. And positive feedback, of course, the players and visitors alike complimented the pristine course, efficient logistics, and the friendliness of the community. Many said they can't wait to come back. This would have not been possible without the strong support from the city and the dedication of your staff. Their responsiveness, communication, and on-the-ground help were vital to making this event run smoothly. We will continue our public comment with thank yous from the next speaker.
Our next public speaker is Ryan Smith.
My name is Ryan Smith, I'm also here on behalf of Mason County Disc Golf. We'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the local businesses and city staff members who went above and beyond to support the Cascade Challenge. Local businesses included High School Beer, Marrow, Wild Irish, Shelton's Farm Stand, Sugar and Bean Coffee, El Sarate Cantina, Tacos La Quina, Caposon Skydiving, Builders First Source, AAA Septic, Mason County Garbage, Shelton YMCA, Mason EDC, Beauty 3, and KMS and Explorer of Canal. The city staff, who were also excellent to work with, uh, included Parks and Rec Supervisor Jordan Crumple, uh, Luke Manning and team, Mike Alba and team, particularly Todd Rhodes and Matt Deemer, uh, Fire Marshal Keith Ritz and Battalion Chief Samantha Fox, Customer Service Specialist Sharon Jicket, and of course, City Manager Mark Ziegler, who has been a supporter of Mason County Disc Golf since the inception of Shelton Springs. With your continued support, we believe that the Cascade Challenge can become a cornerstone annual event for Shelton, offering real economic value, national visibility, and pride in our Parks and Community. Thank you again for your trust, your support, and your partnership.
Thank you. Can't wait to get the motels built so we can fill them up with your people, right? Call Mr. Hall at Hawk Rapids, he'll help build a hotel for us.
And the next speaker is Mike O'Henry. O'Henry? I'm not sure I'm reading.
O'Henry.
O'Henry?
Need passing.
Next is.
Good evening. Uh, just wanted to talk about something that many of us see, but few truly understand. The difference between vagrants and homeless, and why that distinction matters. When we hear word, when we hear the word homeless, we often think of people who have fallen on hard times. Individuals or families displaced by rising rent, job loss, or personal crisis. These are people who may be seeking shelter, accessing support services, and actively trying to get back on their feet. NGOs and social service organizers are geared towards helping these individuals because the word homeless carries sympathy, dignity, and frankly, it opens the doors to funding and resources. Now contrast that with the word vagrant, it's an old term, but one still used. Often to describe individuals who are not just unhoused, but also engage in behavior that is disruptive, illegal, and even dangerous. Vagrancy is associated with open drug use, public intoxication, aggressive panhandling, vandalism, and refusal, and refusal or abuse of help. Uh, and here's the key, NGOs don't like the word vagrant because it doesn't attract sympathy. It stigmatizes, it suggests criminality, instability, and most importantly, it doesn't open wallets or build public support for programs. Look no further than Brewer Park. Walk through there today and you'll see over 20 tents scattered throughout the area. It's no longer just a park, it's an open street encampment. Alongside the tents, you'll find drug paraphernalia, open alcohol use, piles of garbage, vandalized bathrooms, graffiti-covered walls, and unfortunately, hostile behavior towards pedestrians and families. This isn't just homelessness, this is vagrancy. And that's why language matters. When we lump all of these issues under homelessness, we risk misdiagnosing the problem. People who want help, need services, housing, and compassion, but those who reject help and disrupt communities, the ones we see in Brewer Park, need something different, they need accountability, intervention, and enforcement. We cannot solve a problem that we refuse to name. And we must distinguish between those who are simply down on their luck and those whose choices are creating unsafe public spaces. Recognizing that difference isn't justice or isn't judgment, it's clarity. Okay? So, we all see what's going on, we all know what's going on. Uh, there was also an OD death in Brewer Park just last week. So now that individual has been part of the homeless community and the street people for many years. So how did enabling help him? It didn't. And as one of our council people always says, there's blood on your hands. Who's blood and whose hands? So, let's take a look and open our eyes, thank you.
Well, we have to sign up.
Our first person, or? Oh. That's fine, you can come and sign in.
Revenue will have to state their name when they come up, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor? If they'll just state their name in the podium when they come up. That way we can. Keep them with me. If you don't mind, just go in the podium and say your name.
Greetings, greetings, everybody. Thank y'all for y'all patience and allowing me to get up here and speak.
But can you say your name and?
Yeah, hello, my name is Juan Barker. I'm currently, I currently work at the Youth Connection, where we support vulnerable young people in need of direction and stability. Just last month, we helped poor young people secure housing. With continued support, we are confident it will become self-sufficient within six to eight months. Through the Housing First approach, we achieved an 86% success rate in preventing return to homelessness. This success is thanks to intensive case management, strong partnership with other organizations, and comprehensive wraparound services. This model works, and it should be expanded to all individuals experiencing homelessness. I'm here to speak about ordinance number 2029-0525. I understand the need to address homelessness, especially with Community Lifeline no longer able to serve individuals. But I want to emphasize, we are talking about real people, human beings, who need support, not punishment. According to HUD, over 31,000 people are homeless on any given night in Washington State. Of those, more than 30,000 are chronically homeless. This is not just a Mason County issue, it's a statewide and national crisis. If I've read this ordinance correctly, removing the supportive language could result in arrest or fines. That approach doesn't solve homelessness, it deepens it. The resource spent enforcing such measures could be better used to create real solutions, shelter, support, and stability. Let's ask ourselves, what if these were your family, your brother, sister, niece, or nephew? The truth is, any of us could be one crisis, one lost job, or one medical emergency away from homelessness. Let's focus on solutions that restore dignity and hope, thank you.
My name is Morgan Hopson, and I just wanted to share statements that are unhoused, have made. Uh, these statements are all individuals that are currently unhoused in Shelton. Uh, I try to do the right thing and understand where we should be staying, but everyone in the system just gives different answers. We deserve to be safe too, we are afraid when it's dark, I have been raped. If everyone must scatter, we must have partners, there's a lot of people being raped, there was a young girl screaming down the road recently, being chased by a man in underwear. I recently stopped two girls that are unhoused from being pulled into a vehicle against their will. No one is talking about sex trafficking that is happening out there. They try keeping, or they keep trying to take mostly boys, it's scary, we have to find a way to stay together out on the streets. I've tried to do better and get off the streets, I do not use drugs, I just struggle with my autism. We are frustrated too. There are so many people that try and stop and pick me up to have sex with them, it does not matter where I'm at, it's scary. People drive by, use, and vehicles and shoot pelicans at us, they shoot at us for no reason. I've had groups of people try and fight me for no reason, just have pulled over and jumped up and tried to fight me. If you check the list of all the sex offenders in Mason County, most are housed, we are at risk out here too. We need these kids to quit vandalizing things, there's a certain few running around ruining it for everyone. Most of, do not use these kinds of things. We need to listen to understand and not to respond. It's not just addicts sleeping outside, it's our elderly who cannot get housing, youth who do not have family, those who are escaping EB. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our speaker is Jamie Ellerton.
Good evening, everyone, I apologize for my voice ahead of time, um, but my name is Jamie Ellerton. I'm a lifelong resident of Mason County. I am a business owner downtown Shelton, I own a substance use treatment facility. Um, I also know probably every one of our unhoused individuals in our community. And I would just like to address the ordinance revision, um, that has been brought up. So, I would like to start by saying that there is going to be some really devastating consequences that are going to come forth if there's not safety planning. Um, I think that starting with understanding why our unhoused are at Brewer Park. They're okay with moving other places, they're okay with going to the mitigation site like we started talking about in the group three years ago. Um, but the reality is, there's safety in numbers, and there's things happening in our community by folks that are housed to our unhoused people. And it's not just drug addicts that are out there, if you guys are frustrated with open drug use, so are we. Um, and, you know, the reality is, so if you go down and talk to those people and hear what is actually happening, there's a reason they congregate in life. There's a reason that they all stick together. I think until, you know, a whole room of people that want to make decisions that they don't all know that much about, aside from what we see with our eyes. If you go down and listen to, you know, an 18-year-old girl come to you and say that somebody that was housed picked them up and raped them, just because they're sleeping on the streets, or hearing some of those stories, it has a much bigger impact. Um, and you know, I hear things and I, I do see things, people flipping on the sidewalks, like, we don't like that either, right? But there, I, I've never had an incident going down to Brewer Park where I've been accosted or yelled at. Sometimes I work until 2:00 in the morning down here on Second Street, I haven't had those issues. Um, I also just want to say that we have elderly, I know it was mentioned that elderly deserve more supports. I don't disagree, but you know how many elderly go down here and sleep at Community Lifeline and are dropped off by local hospitals? Um, I also would like to just add in that, again, our unhoused are not opposed to relocating, but we need consistency, it can't be one day, they could stay at Brewer Park till we find another solution, and then the next day they gotta go. Um, starting with the mitigation site, I think it would honestly work really well. Um, and also, I would just say that moving forward with the terminology of being an enabler, I think it's very enabling if we're hostile and mean, mean is mean whether you're unhoused or not.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I would just like to share a story of what happened to me at Brewer Park two weeks ago. I work kitty corner from Brewer Park, so I often observe what happens over at the park. And I had a couple of minutes, so I went over and talked to the people at the ETS drunk, and I just asked them like, hey, who are you funded by? Where's money come from, and what are you doing here? Listen, and they, you guys all know what it is, so I don't need to waste my time on that, but at the end, I asked them like, what would it take for you guys to be moved to somewhere else so you're not next to a public park? And they said it would take the city of Shelton, which is all you people here that make the decisions. So my next question was, my wife showed up a few minutes later with my three-year-old niece, so I asked the gentleman at the ETS drunk, I said, is it safe for my three-year-old niece to come to Brewer Park, so I can say hi to her? The gentleman at the ETS bus told me that he could not say it was safe for the three-year-old girl to come to the park. So, if that's a public park, and you guys are condoning letting all those people group together, because as they group together, they commit crimes together. And I just want to say like, I know there's been some liabilities to the city, and I really love Shelton, but it's like, you guys, not you guys, or however that works, the proper way to say it, but it's like, there's a creative liability at Brewer Park, and that's something that you guys need to work together on because you guys are allowing them to group together, all of you on the council. And I also want to say that every person on this council here has a voice. And I want to come here and hear you guys speak because all of you guys represent me, my family. And my family can't go to Brewer Park. Why didn't Brewer Park get chosen? And that's all I really have to say, I just want to share that story with you guys, and it's like, how can it be a public park that children can't go to? How can you, how can you allow criminal deviants to collect together on one property, one space? So you want to do a mitigation site, right? Who's going to clean up the mess? You guys can go ahead and decide that you're going to have a mitigation area. So when all the garbage created around the mitigation, who's going to clean it up? The taxpayers? So you guys are going to go around and get the blessing from everyone to pay for it? Everybody wants to help, right? I want to help too, I'm happy to help. But you guys got to look at the whole population, not just 1% of people on the streets or 1% of the elderly. You have to look at the whole Mason County. Don't separate city of Shelton and Mason County, we're all connected together. We really are, we're all one.
Thank you. Right. First and Finance Director Mike Giddens has a presentation, March Financial Status Report.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. So this is the March financial report. So this month represents 25% of the fiscal year, so I like these measures because they're a little bit easier to break things down. Um, not all revenue and expenses can be evenly broken into patterns where you can measure it against 25% or 50%, but it's a nice time to look at where we're at, and we've certainly spent a good amount of this year taking a close look at the budget, and particularly as we focus on the general fund and preparing for 2026. So on the first page of the financial report, the 2025 estimated, um, actual is presented here, so at the top, we're estimating where compared to budget, we think revenue will come in, and you'll notice worth, at this point, estimating revenue will be just slightly above target. Um, I, you know, a quarter gives us a pretty good picture, but at this You know, a quarter gives us a pretty good picture, but at this point, we don't have the full picture. I think we're reasonable here, though. I know you all know we conservatively budget our revenues. But I think seeing that is right where I like to see it. The expenses. We're looking at a variance of three hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars. So in other words, our estimated actual expenses, we're saying will be just under budget by that much. I do want to point out that about two hundred thousand of that is the budget I set for the fire and EMS services, because when we were preparing the budget, we estimated that property values would increase more than they did. And per our inter-local agreement with Central Mason Fire, you know, we reimburse that the actual property value level based on the levy rate, and it came in a bit less, so that budget is being saved. So when you net that out, it's really only about ninety thousand dollars in actual savings. So we're running, my point with that is, we're running close margins in the general fund, which we knew we would be all along. So that's really kind of that top part and a highlight there. I'm gonna go to page two and look at the revenue in just a little bit more detail. We talked about the fact that we're we're estimating anyway that it will be slightly over. So property tax, at the end of March, we haven't gotten the first half payments yet. They're due at the end of April, so I obviously can look at the budget right now or look at our financial system and tell you that we got half of the property taxes in because we're at the middle of May, a little over that. So that's why we're estimating that we fully realize that budget. So that's a good thing. You'll notice on sales and use tax, we're showing an unfavorable variance. It's been a little bit like this in the first months of the fiscal year. So we're estimating it'll be down slightly. That could get revised as the next eight financials reports are prepared, but right now to take that data we have and estimate where we think it's going to be, we're estimating it'll be down about three and a half percent. The other lines, you'll notice we're estimating down on non-city utility as well. This is an area we'll adjust or I'll recommend we adjust it for 2026. It is down due to cable tax, telephone tax. Those are just not coming in as high as they used to, and so we need to take a look at those budget lines. It's still not in a terrible situation. The other place I wanted to highlight was BNO or Business and Occupation Tax. It may actually exceed budget, but it's still a little bit too early to tell. So we're estimating that we'll fully realize that budget, so that's a good thing. The other areas where we're showing either slightly over or slightly under are just where it's at this, at this point in the fiscal year. The miscellaneous revenue is due to some grants and donations we've received that were unexpected as well as investment interest is still doing really well. So that's where the revenue comes from, where our estimates on the revenue is coming from. So it's looking good. We want to fully realize that budget. I'm glad that I'm not sitting here having to tell you we're well under, but at this point, I think it'll only continue to be this outlook or slightly better as the fiscal year continues. At the on the expense side, let's take a look at that for just a second. And the general fund. I mentioned that the one place where we're realizing some saving is on the fire and emergency services line. The rest of the budget, just to point out, as we look down this, some are over, some are slightly under budget. It's a, it's a fully realized general fund, so we're not going to see significant savings. And I think that's something you know about. We certainly spent a lot of time on at the retreat on May fifth, we'll continue to build a budget that we know we need. We just don't have extra in the general fund and the expenses continue to rise faster than our revenue does. So that's where the expense side of the budget is. This page of the financial statement gives an overview by each department. On page four to five of the financial report, we're showing you where the general fund compares revenue and expenditures year to year and month to month. So this is kind of a nice way to look at where we're things like sales tax coming in in twenty-three, twenty-four, and then through March of twenty-five, just as a comparison and our estimate for 2025, and the same with the expenditures. On page six is our sales tax breakdown. We update this monthly with the data we get from the Department of Revenue to show the different types of sales tax and where those are landing. As you know, and we've talked about before, the largest percentage of the city of Shelton's sales tax comes from that retail category. It varies a little bit as you compare month to month, but stays right in there about the same, and we don't have much of a change. On page seven, this page is important for me to highlight to you because it estimates our ending fund balance on each of the citywide funds, so not only the general fund, but everything from the street fund on down to the capital funds and then our enterprise funds. The city's busy this year. There's a lot happening. That's why many of those funds are being drawn down with different projects that are happening around the city. Where, as you know, the budget that you adopted uses some real estate excise tax funds for some maintenance projects. A lot is happening in the capital funds, so that's good to see. Everything, though, we're estimating that these fund balances, you want to see those in the positive. And that's where they're at. So we'll continue to watch that, and as we work on the 2026 budget, that helps for those estimates. At the bottom of page seven, we track citywide FTE, both in the general fund and the other city funds. So at the end of February, so last month's report that I presented to you, we had three and a half vacancies in the general fund. You'll notice that's down to one and a half. We filled a police officer position and a vacant position in finance. So again, those filling those positions, that extends more of the general fund, but it's about getting work and projects accomplished. So I know that councils wanted to see where we're at with that, so we track that monthly. You know, where we're at in May, I think there've been some positions filled in public works over here on these other funds, but we lag a little bit because we're reporting at March, so we'll continue to update that monthly. And then on pages eight through twelve are the citywide fund-by-fund overview of revenue and expenditures at a rolled-up level. So I know for some it's a more preferred way to look at this, but as you go down, the general fund, which we focus quite a bit on, is there, but then the street fund and on down through the capital resource funds, and then the water sewer storm funds are in there also so that you can see exactly where we're estimating the revenues and expenditures to be at March. We take a lot of time to really look at this once the month closes to make sure we're accurately giving you a clear picture and the public on where our funds stand month to month. So that's all the comments I have. I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for Mike? No? Thank you, Mike, for the great report again, and I'd like to say Mike has been our finance director for about three years.
Yes.
And moving on for other pursue other interests, and he was been a great asset to this city. His budgets have been great. His there's never a surprise when Mike's doing doing our budget, and he's assembled a great staff. And we'll miss him, and thank you, Mike, for over thirty-three years.
Thank you very much.
First business item is an ordinance about public camping. City manager Mark Ziegler has more information for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Back in 2021, the city adopted ordinance regarding camping on public property, and this is based on federal case law that prohibits municipalities from imposing criminal penalties for public camping unless there is available options for indoor shelter. As you know, since that, the United States Supreme Court ruled back in 2024 that local ordinances imposing those criminal penalties on acts like public sleeping or camping do not violate the Eighth Amendment's cruel and unusual punishment, even if shelter space is available. We've seen many changes throughout Washington State and local ordinances regarding public camping. So as a request from council members I've brought to you tonight, drafted a Shelton municipal code eight point seven four that removes eight point seven four oh three oh, which are the prohibitions regarding the public camping. And so those specific prohibitions include, I'll go through these specifically, a person is in violation of the above eight point seven four oh one oh eight. May be, may only be charged with a misdemeanor when all the following conditions are met. The city of Shelton employee makes personal contact with the violator and advises them of the prohibition on public camping. Number two, in response to contact by the employee, the violator either does not remove their camp or wrecks a camp on a different public property within the city. Number three, a Shelton employee informs the violator of available indoor shelter and takes reasonable steps to help the violator access the indoor shelter. And number four, the violator fails to or refuses to utilize available shelter. The violator's criminal record or sex offender status prohibits them from utilizing available shelter, or the shelter has declined to provide services to the violator, do the violator's safe behavior. And for the purposes of this section, in B, available means all of the following. City has contacted the shelter to confirm the shelter has bed space for the violator. Shelter does not impose conditions that are unrelated to health, welfare, and safety, such as a requirement to participate in religious activities, and three, the shelter is free to the violator, and number four, the violator is able to arrange transportation to the shelter or the city arranges transportation to the shelter free of charge to the violator. Again, that's the section that would be removed from the proposed draft ordinance. Cover briefly a couple definitions with this ordinance. One, the definition, camping means remaining overnight in a tent, hut, lean-to, or other temporary shelter or structure. And then public property means all real property within the city limits in which the city has a property interest and which is reserved for any public person, purpose, excuse me, including city-owned rights-of-way, parks, public facilities, easements, critical areas, and buffers.
Help, Mr. Question, the city manager?
So what is the timeline on this again?
So tonight, it's scheduled as a business agenda item, so this is your first look. It's required to have a public hearing and it's a change of city ordinance. So upon, you know, the council's action tonight, it could be scheduled for a public hearing on June third.
Okay.
So we haven't had a lot of time to discuss it. I have a lot of questions, and we don't have anything on our agenda for next week's study session. Would it be possible for us to move this there? And right now, we're just deciding whether to move this to a public hearing next week, not to action, correct, for two weeks?
As proposed, correct. Upon the council's
I can ask a bunch of questions today. But we don't have anything, so I'd love to do it that way, just kind of discuss it. Can we move this to after we look at our budget, our budget and level discussion that we're gonna have, because this obviously could affect all sorts of budgets. And I think that we should think about moving it when we have a better idea of when, what this is gonna cost. Either moving everyone to a mitigation side or where do these people go and end up, and how are we going to process the individuals when we have to go through court, when we have to start asking people to leave, where did they go? And then, even if those people get get fined and given a ticket, where did they go? Who's gonna take their place because there's three hundred more people out there? So who's gonna fill that spot? And if we're gonna keep on doing this forever and ever, not do anything real about housing in this community? So that's what I'm asking, like, what, how much is this gonna cost? Where do these people go? I've asked too many questions, and can we move this to we think about what it's gonna cost in total? And I think we should talk about our service levels now, and we have to cut to make this happen, especially if it involves policing and hundred sixty dollars a night at the county jail or hundred forty dollars a night at Missfalling. So I don't, I don't think we have enough data to make a responsible decision for everybody. And I think the community deserves to know where our money's gonna go and if it's gonna be spent wisely. So I'd like to make a motion that we wait until we go through our budgeting process first and then talk about this again in the near future. Can I make that motion?
Well, let's, let's deal with Tom's first. He wants to know if we can do a study session next Tuesday. So does anybody?
Sure, we can talk about it on Tuesday. I don't care.
I'd like to have our budget.
Well, let's, well, let's deal with Tom's.
Did I need a motion for that?
I don't think there's a motion. I think
Not for a study.
There's a discussion, correct?
Yeah, sorry, yeah. So, Melissa and George, studies happening Tuesday.
Or this motion, the way it is. I think we've spent enough time fighting with this, dealing with this, had it going around it, and it's time to move forward and get this over with.
Yeah, I'm tired of kicking the can down that road.
Right, so first I had, I had a yes, study session, but now it's no.
We can talk about it all you want, but we need to move forward.
Oh, okay.
We had a
Let's, let's wait, Miguel, for somebody else, anybody else to comment. Let's, let everybody have comments, and then we'll get back to second rounds. George, comments?
Um, I think we've kicked this down the road long enough. It's not getting any better, and we need to get something done, and I'm tired of getting ripped off, so are all my neighbors.
I totally agree with George.
All right, go with your questions, I guess.
Well, I mean, I'll clarify that I'm not saying we shouldn't vote on this tonight. I'm asking if we can vote on this tonight and for the public hearing, and before the public hearing, and we talk about it as real business, so that's what I'm asking.
So are we gonna have a study session Tuesday? Okay, then we can get all our budgets answered, so let me get back to my script here.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, a couple things. In order to prepare for that, for that study session, it's a week away, I'd like to have if you, if you will, written questions, or we can schedule a meeting, council members. I have a number of questions specifically regarding the costs associated with this, and it's it's really difficult to project that, right? I think that we've talked about that in some briefings, not knowing, not knowing what, what what the extent of any citations that will occur. So if you've got some specific questions for me, I'd love to have those in writing so we can develop those answers for you, and then we'll, we'll develop an agenda for that meeting so we can specifically, again, address those, those questions that the council may have.
Questions now?
Feel free to email them to me. I mean, if there's anything now, feel free, but if, but I'm happy to take those in writing just for clarity, right? So I can understand the question. I've got it in writing. We can succinctly answer those to the best of our ability with the departments that will be passed with, you know, whatever, whatever, whatever function it will take to either enforce this or or regulate this code or address this code in any other manner.
I have some questions, I guess. I mean, what are the impacts to the police? I mean, so we have people in one place at the moment. We probably have the best place, but if we remove them, where are they gonna go and do our police now have to go to multiple locations and or to, to mitigate some of the, some of the problems that Brewer Park actually has? We know that there's problems down there, so is it, I mean, so I want to know what the impact of the police are. You know, we all, we have property crimes, assaults, missing persons, rapes, and murder investigations. I want to know how this is gonna affect the police department. I mean, do we need another officer probably to you know, to run people to the squally? I mean, that'd be nice to know in the next meeting, I guess, but if that's the case. You know, mitigation site spots, you know, we've got C Street. I mean, we've got Front Street, we don't property there. I mean, we've got Front Street, we don't property there. We have Civic Center property right here, or we have, um, behind, we have that little area back there we could use. But I'm, I'm, I think we, we need this ordinance down the road. I don't think we're ready for it yet. I mean. I think that we need to set up something or somewhere for them to go before we actually move people. Out of Brewer Park to in front of people, in front of Nitas, in front of. Marmos and, and ev- every alcove and business. I think that we do need to move them out of Brewer Park, but we need to move them somewhere. I don't know where they're gonna go. We cleaned the park out, what, a year and a half ago and they went up the tracks and then. They got chased out of the tracks, they came back to the park, so I'm just trying to figure out. Where are they gonna go and how are we gonna be chasing them all over town? So I mean, I think we need this ordinance, but I think we also need to probably address mitigation site at the moment. If we want to do that, what's it gonna cost to have them move them over here? I mean, at least move them somewhere. I don't, I don't know. I don't know if the answer is, okay, please let us have, this is a conversation for the council, let us do this. And for the city manager, I'm kind of trying to figure out where they're gonna go. I don't know where they're gonna go. So also. Um, it's under my understanding that if they have mental illness problems, they won't get booked. They just. You just write them a ticket and that's it and then they just stay where they are? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, well, every indication that they, that most likely is, this is a misdemeanor. It probably wouldn't be booked anyway. And as, as you mentioned. Taking an officer off the street to transport somebody in a squally would be especially officers at the time, whether. There's anything more important going on, uh, it's a higher priority. Mental health evaluation would happen either possibly at the time of booking or through, through adjudication. Um, so it could be a competency hearing on an individual, whether they're able to, um, able to navigate the. The proceedings in court.
And how much are the tickets?
Up two thousand dollars.
Set up to or set out?
And if they were to leave Brewer Park and go to another public location. Say that, would that be like multiple tickets? Could they get multiple tickets in one night?
I mean, potentially it's per violation. Yes, yes, the code is right.
This is a council meeting, please let us finish.
Our motion, we move forward with the draft ordinance amendment.
I'm not done yet. I'm not done yet. I'll finish my conversation. I have the floor, then we'll do the motion. I'm not saying I don't have a, that I'm not willing to move people out of Brewer Park. I'm saying what is the plan? How are we gonna, how are we going to mitigate? Fifty, you said there's twenty tents, fifty people. You know, in three weeks. Where are they gonna go in three weeks? That, that is, that is my question, so. And do we know if our nonprofits have gone down there to do outreach? Do we know if our nonprofits are doing outreach down there right now?
Um, I've seen, yeah, I've seen some of our, our service providers down there. I don't know what the schedule is and I don't know what the, the form or. Level of outreach is, I can, I can seek some of that information prior to the study session next week as well.
Well, that's just questions I had. I'm all for moving this to a public hearing and listening to what the public has to say about it, um, it won't professional managers, so. With a motion in a second to move this to.
I have a motion on the floor, Mr. Mayor. I had a motion on the floor.
Uh, will you remit the motion?
I made a motion to talk about this after we talk about our budget situation, put those in front of this situation.
Is there a second? Oh, second. And there's a motion in a second to place, to table this?
Table this until we look at the whole budgetary situation before we talk about this.
Motion in a second to table this until we have a budget conversation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Moves to a roll call vote? A move for a roll call vote?
Fine, Miguel. Roll call vote, yes.
Yeah, I, I approve.
No, just say yes.
Yes.
Okay. No.
Yes.
No.
No.
I, I, I'm sorry, I just think that we're past that. I think that the study session and, and, um. And getting into a public hearing is probably the most important. So, there's a motion in a second to. To place this on the next meeting. Which is, um, June third. For a public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, motion carries. Now, I want, I think I needed a reading, I'm sorry, Mary. Thank you, Mary. Do we need to mark, do we need to redo the motion?
No, it's, okay, it's recorded. I think the intent.
George's motion is handled, please let the council. It's done. All right. Our next item is park rec supervisor Jordan Crumple says an update about traffic box artwork.
Thank you, Mister Mayor and members of council. Tonight I bring you the next recommendations for the installation of the traffic boxes. We've been doing this project since twenty nineteen, I think was our first installation. Which is the main point of this project is to help unify Shelton and stop the graffiti at the intersection where they're located and I will say since. This has started, we haven't had any graffiti on any of them, so which is great and we haven't had to replace any of them because of it. So tonight I bring you the next round of those. Uh, we did a call to artists. This is just for Mason County members only. To bid, bring in their art. Um, we did it through online. Uh, sorry, press releases through all city social media and the journal, um, to get the word out. And we had nineteen submittals. Which is the most that we've had overall since we started this project, which is great. The Arts Commission did a first round of jury to make sure that the artwork followed all the criteria that we asked for and they all did, so they all got pushed. To a public vote, um, so we let the public make their choices. We asked for their top three. Which is what you'll see tonight. And we had a overall fourteen eighty-eight of votes, so one thousand four hundred and eighty-eight votes, which is more than we had than the last time. I would say I think Mary might be able to test this. We had like a thousand almost within the first two days. Which is impressive. So the word's getting out, um, artists, we gave them the link, they were able to share it with whoever they wanted to. To get those votes in. So, and then it came back to the Arts Commission is to do one more quick finalization. And then we did have to send one of the art to the state because one of the traffic boxes that we're doing is state owned. Um, and it passed. So the three artists is Brad Lyman. He did a cutthroat fish, which will be located up on Highway North. It is replacing the octopus. That was from our first installation. Um, the only reason is that. It was damaged. It's starting to peel away, so we decided to switch that out. Um, first one that we've had replaced since the very start too. Um, Brian Lesman, uh, is gonna be down by Tozer's intersection. Uh, and then Tammy Love Lyons will be up on Arcadia where the Chevron and gas station are going on that side of town. And we had generous donations from the Marthree Foundation and Sierra Pacific Industries to help us fund this project. To be able to do all three boxes, so we, big thank you to them as well. And tonight, um, if you have any questions, we'd have to answer them.
Do we have a motion?
Mister Mayor, we can forward the traffic box project to the June third, twenty twenty-five action agenda for further consideration.
All right, comments or questions? No, thank you, Jordan, for all your hard work with this. All right, we have a motion in a second to forward the trap box project to June third, twenty twenty-five action agenda for the consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, next we have resolution about design services for railway removal projects. Public Works Director Jay Harris has detailed.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilor Jay Harris, Public Works Director. Uh, so in twenty twenty-three, we received a grant. For, um, six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars to remove, uh, three rail crossings. Uh, one's down at SR three, it's between the Goldsboro Creek Bridge and Park Street. And then, uh, the next one's at, uh, Seventh Street. And, uh, it would be, uh, towards the hill on, on, uh, near Park, uh, but up, up, up from Park. And then the last one is Holbert Road, that's the entrance up here to Miles Sand and Gravel. So, uh, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, uh, included design services and, uh, construction. It was a federal grant that we received, so we had to go through a pretty formal process for design service procurement. We put out an RFP, uh, we had interviews, um, we had two people that responded. And, uh, critique was selected as, um, the, the. Most qualified out of the two firms. And, um, so then we got a scope and cost estimate for their design services for the three crossing removal. And, uh, you'll, you'll see that in the packet. And I apologize, it's a little lengthy. There's a bunch of federal stuff in there and there's scope services, all sorts of things, so there's a lot of paper there. But, uh, staff, uh, wants to move forward, um, with, uh, a critique. And, uh, this is what the resolutions for. Our goal is to have it designed this year. And then be able to forbid, uh, hopefully early spring next year, uh, for the actual improvements to happen.
Right, thank you. Is there a reading of resolution number one three seven eight dash zero four two five?
Resolution number one three seven eight dash zero four two five. Resolution of the council of the city of Washington, allowing the city manager to enter into agreement number two five dash zero zero two. Dash PSA, thirteen ink for design services, railroad crossing, road journey.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a motion?
Mister Mayor, I would place resolution number one three seven eight dash zero four two five of the council's action agenda on the June third, twenty twenty-five. Meeting for further consideration.
All right, comments or questions? Pretty easy, thank you, Jay. We have a motion in a second to place resolution number one three seven eight dash zero two five on the action agenda for June third. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Right, another one from Jay.
Yeah, uh, so this is the second of three and what we go on the road to, so I don't have to get up and down all that. So we have an ILA with Mason County, um, last fall we adopted it. And, um, it's enabled city, uh, to share resources with Mason County. That's equipment, their fueling station in an emergency, we go up there and fuel their facility. And then also we can utilize their shop services up there. On the sharing of the resources part though, it was for smaller projects, things that would last about a day, that sort of thing. Not a huge cost to those. So in the interlocal agreement, uh, that we had, uh, last fall. It did talk about we'd have to enter a separate interlocal agreement if we wanted to do any larger projects. That's what's in front of you tonight. And, uh, so the proposed interlocal agreement. Wants to, uh, share, uh, equipment, materials, personnel. To do, uh, the utility maintenance projects, uh, roadway projects, that sort of thing. So we are planning right now to, uh, pave up the West Mountain View area, um, later this summer with the county. And, uh, so what we do, uh, we've done, uh, Front Street, uh, two years ago, we did Capitol Hill last year. This will be the third year we're utilizing the county. We're thinking it's gonna take about two days. They have, uh, large, uh. Trucks, hauling trucks and, uh, pops that go along with it. So they go up that self-combing of the material, get it back there to asphalt. And, uh, then their paving machine and their rollers, we do traffic control and that sort of thing for them. Moving forward, so if, if this ILA is approved, that allow this project happen this su- this summer. We're gonna be helping them, uh, on some hauling needs, um, and we've helped them in the past with some pavement grinding. And smaller things, um, they've actually done a lot more for us than we've done for them. But we're trying to change our relationship moving forward. Um, so, uh, I'm available for questions about the ILA.
Uh, Mary, can we read the resolution number one three eight six dash zero five two five?
Resolution number one three eight six dash zero five two five. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington. Authorizing the city manager to sign an interlocal agreement with Mason County for roadway and utility maintenance and transportation projects.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a motion?
Mister Mayor, I would place resolution number one three eight six dash zero five two five on the action agenda for the June third council meeting for the.
Right, comments or? Oh, sorry, comments or questions? Nope. All right, I loved it when we worked with our county partners. We have a motion in a second to place resolution number one three eight six dash zero five two five on the action agenda for June's third council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, we're recessing from regular meetings, so open a public hearing. Uh, Jay.
Yes, uh, council, uh, mayor. So, uh, this, uh, transportation improvement program, the acronym is called TIP. And, uh, the state of Washington requires us to adopt an updated transportation improvement plan every year. It goes out six years, so it's sort of this rolling thing. So I was here a year ago. So, uh, what this allows us to do is to plan out these capacity related projects. These could be pedestrian capacity. Or roadway capacity type of projects. And so when you go to the actual tip list, um, that's been updated from twenty twenty-four. You'll see a couple pages of information, a lot of reading, okay, a lot of things, so. Like the intersection of Wallace, Dillon and Shelton Springs, that's on there. Um, we did, just recently installed some left turn updates of that intersection, which has helped the traffic flow immensely. The proposal is to put a roundabout in there down the road. We have some money to get that roundabout signed and, and get a shovel ready. Also, Thirteenth and Wallace Dillon is another intersection. You go down the whole list. And, uh, the cross town trail projects are on there, um, which are gonna be great. And we got some design money for that also. Uh, we don't have any construction, uh, money. And then we have a developer project, so, um, they pay traffic impact fees, uh, for each unit. And in that, uh, traffic impact fee program, I can give credits back to them. If they put in a capacity project, like a signal or like at, uh, Coffee Creek. They're gonna be running SASS up down to Deegan Road that will allow the top of the hill to start going out another way and not have to come downtown and out. So, uh, things like that, uh, so developers, when they add capacity to the system, we have a mechanism to do that in our code. So you'll see some of those projects at the bottom. And, uh, one of the important ones is Olympic Heights. So you have Alpine Drive, uh, roadway, that's gonna be extended through Olympic Heights. It's setting out to, uh, the Port of John's Prairie campus. It's a long-term project, that's a collector roadway. They're doing improvements along that roadway. They'll be eligible, uh, for some traffic impact fees, uh, down the road. I put Capitol Hill, I added a couple, um, or updated a couple of projects. Pedestrian connectivity from the hill to downtown and try to get some winds up there. As we get some development up there, it'll be good to get some people. Hold it safer walking, uh, it's sand walking, magnolia, that sort of thing. Uh, they're steep and, and they're pretty narrow. So, uh, eventually we want to try to get some projects down of there, uh, longer term. Uh, that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Jay. I'm all lost here. Any must have pu- public comment?
No, we don't.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Mister Mayor, I would place resolution number one three eight three dash zero four two five. On the action agenda for the June third, twenty twenty-five council meeting for the consideration.
Comments or questions?
Mister Mayor, Joe, I, you need to recess from the public hearing and then back into the action.
Okay, yeah. We're recessing from the public hearing.
Yeah, ne- next.
Yeah, yeah, we're going backwards.
Yep.
All right. So do we, now do we have a motion?
Now I have to place resolution number one three eight thirty dash zero four two five. On the action agenda for the June third, twenty twenty-five council meeting for further consideration.
All right, comments or questions?
You need a second?
Usually faster than that. You say you're really fast. All right, um. No, the only comment I have is I, I sure like to add a, a study for a crosswalk in front of K at King, I believe, by the new Mountain View School. There's one to the block. Each block probably each direction and on, right in front of the school. And I think, uh. All underneath would be a eighty-eight cutout on the school side. And then it's just a crosswalk painted, so it's great school kids can cross safely.
Yeah, we looked at that in the local road safety plan and the project didn't rise, uh, up to the high list. The systemic pedestrian improvement plan, uh, that we have going along with Olympic Highway North. Are the top projects we got grant funding for, but it's still on the list for. Pedestrian impro- improvements. It's just we got funding for these others that we're trying to push out first. where there were some fatalities and, and larger issues.
Any other comments or questions? And we have a motion and a second to place resolution number one three eight three dash zero four two five on the action agenda to June third council meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Impasses, public hearing is closed, we're assuming a regular meeting.
Well, that's why they do it later at the bottom.
All right, now onto the action agenda, we have information on Civic Center, rotating art gallery, and Jordan, you're up again.
Thank you. Um, so yes, tonight I bring you two recommendations for our next rotation of the art gallery here in Civic Center. Um, we did a call to artists, uh, we got four artists who submitted work, um, all local. Uh, we have two new names that came up this time and two return, returning names, which is great. Um, Shelton Arts Commission met on the May sixth, the jury of the submissions, and they will be up between June third and August twenty-ninth. Um, Brad Lyman, who also was one of our traffic box winners, has some acrylic work, along with Sophia Spurling, who also has acrylic. Uh, Deborah Shava Singer and Elizabeth Jacobson, both of the returning artists, both with some photography work. And tonight we're just looking for final approval, happy to answer any questions.
Anyone said a public comment? We have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to approve Shelton Arts Commission's recommendation for placement of Civic Center rotating art gallery.
Comments or questions? Jordan, we have a motion in a second to approve the Shelton Arts Commission recommendations for placement of Civic Center rotating art gallery, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we have, uh, a resolution from Assistant Public Works Director Aaron Nix about design services for some, some, that has just pedestrian safety, Olympic Highway North improvement projects, boy, that was a multiple.
Mayor, Council, it's an honor to be, to be here, thank you. Um, we discussed this in your last meeting, this is a big project for us because of the impact that it's gonna have, not only on the area, but on the community, um, is there a system of two projects, as Jared J alluded to, the systemic pedestrian improvement projects, basically four areas where we're going to do improvements, one is an analysis, um, in essence, um, looking to put crosswalks in, those types of things. That money, which we got, was about one point two nine million, um, and that's all federal money. Um, part of what we did, uh, and I think I told you guys already, we got about three and a half million, almost four million dollars from another granting agency called TIV, um, to do repaving on Olympic Highway North, that's the big part, it's really critical for us. Clearly, Olympic Highway North is struggling, it's failing, um, and we want to get that done. So what you have before you is we basically have about four million dollars from TIV, another one point two million, uh, from another granting agency to do those, uh, intersection improvements, and then totally rebuild Olympic Highway North, which is huge for us, um, so, again, this is federal, we had to go through all of the, the dotting, uh, i's and crossing t's with regard to allowing local programs to come in and interview consultants with us. We finally arrived at this, and I, I just want, for the record, staff has been very diligent on trying to get projects in front of Wazdot. This is not a negative comment about Wazdot, but they are so behind that we've had projects in the queue for several months waiting for their approval, so, it's imperative that we get this passed so that we can then tell Wazdot, look, we're ready to go, and, um, they are about ready to issue P E authorization, which is the, the design of the project. We just need to approve this, so I'm happy to answer questions, all of this, you guys, is gonna be covered under grant money. So, there's no, I'm aware of city contribution at this point.
Thank you, Aaron. Mary, anyone said a public comment?
No, we don't.
Do we have a reading of resolution number one three six two dash one one two four?
Resolution number one three six two dash one one two four. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, allowing the city manager to enter into agreement number two four dash zero zero seven dash PSA for transporters for design, committing support for the systemic pedestrian safety improvement projects and Olympic Highway North Broadway.
Thank you, Mary, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to adopt resolution number one three six two dash one one two four, as written.
Second.
All right, comments or questions?
This is anything like how we did the gateway railroad, it's totally needed, thank you for all your work done. Way more accessible to walk those streets, it's way safer. Um, my dog is fifteen years old now and doesn't make it home all the time, we can roll a cart, put her in the cart and get her back home when she just stops and doesn't wanna get home, so, if, if it works for her at her elderly age, I'm sure it works for everyone in their elderly age. So thank you for the hard work and it's public works, is this still public works month? Thank you so much for, uh, for all the work you've done, and then all the work we will do in the future.
I just wanna add just very quickly, uh, we are gonna do outreach out there, that piece of Olympic Highway North is gonna be significant, it's significantly gonna impact those businesses there, so, we have a plan in this to do some extensive outreach to the businesses along there to have the discussion, because it's gonna, it's not gonna be a quick turnaround of this project, it will be several months.
This is basically from C Street at the top of the hill all the way to Walmart.
All the way to Wallace Nealon, correct.
Yeah, that's, are they gonna do it in sections, or is it gonna be?
We're, that's, we're gonna work out with us, design, I suspect, we'll probably leave some links open, maybe work in the middle or on the side, and then redirect traffic, but we'll, we'll figure that out in design.
Anything else? Right, we have a motion in seconds to adopt, first number one three six two dash one one two four is written, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Final action item is a contract amendment on call building services committee, economic development, Jay Hill was not here, Mark Ziegler will be presenting more information.
But he was mayor, I apologize, I should have, yeah, where is he in the audience, I should have notified you under the changes in the agenda tonight, um. Bringing to the council tonight, um, amended contracts with our on-call building code services pool. Um, as council member back in November twenty twenty-four, we brought three contracts forward for approval that would supplement our existing staff for building code review. Since that time, well, excuse me, eh, each contract had a maximum fifty thousand dollars. Since that time, our building inspectors left, we've seen some increase in, in building activity, particularly, uh, at, uh, Mason General Hospital. We anticipate, uh, residential development to come down the pike really soon, and we're in the busy construction season just with remodels and things like that, so we wanna be, um, um, be able to, um, manage, um, and meet, um, our required, um, turnaround times and state mandated, mandated per, permit review timelines, um, to our customers and make sure they're able to make the investments in the community that we want, uh, we want them all to make, right? And so by, by increasing the limits from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand, it provides us more flexibility to continue and maintain to do that. Um, one of the service providers, Safe Belt, is providing us an inspector one day a week, um. It certainly will be a reduced service, unfortunately, but we're happy to have that, that inspector one day a week, because that wasn't a guarantee when we first started, um, moved through this process, trying to find somebody to supplement those services, um, so with, uh, with the council's approval, again, there's three contracts, um, one with Safe Belt, uh, one with Clarity and West Coast, um, that would increase the, uh, maximum allowable expenditures each two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you. Mary, anyone said a public comment? Yeah, we have a reading of resolution number one three eight five dash zero five two five.
Resolution number one three eight five dash zero five two five. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, increasing contract limits for existing on-call building services.
Thank you, Mary, do we have a motion?
I'm going to approve resolution number one three eight five dash zero five two five, increase outside building services contract limits.
Right, comments or questions? Oh, comments or questions? Is this, is this, uh, Monday a week inspector gonna be on the big projects, or is this for like individual?
Uh, no, these are mostly the residential projects, um, a lot of the large commercial projects, because the building inspector that we had previously didn't have some of those commercial certifications, so, those were already sent out to some of these contractors to, to do the plan review as well as inspections. I will remind you, uh, budgetarily, um, so these services are, are paid, uh, either at time and materials or a percentage of the permit itself.
Questions, we have a motion in second to approve resolution number one three eight five dash zero five two five to increase the building service contract limits, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Right, we're at, Mark, do you have a city manager report?
You know, the only thing I wanna mention is Forest Festival's around the corner, we won't have a council meeting before that occurs again, uh, and city staff is working diligently with Forest Festival Committee to make sure, uh, everything is planned and, uh, to go off smoothly and accordingly with street closures. Um, setting up Loop Field for the logging show and the vendors down there, the car show on Olympic Highway North, um, fireworks show, and then I think most people have seen the carnival equipment, uh, off of, off of First Street there too. And so we anticipate that to be started up this, this week as it are here early, so, um, we're doing what we can to make sure any, uh, forest festival activities go off without a hitch.
I love something Shelton. Got movies coming pretty soon too. Movies coming in July.
July, absolutely.
All right. Is council having any new items for discussion tonight? All right, our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June third at six P M, we also have study session, May twenty-seventh at six P M, and we are adjourned seven twenty P M.